Well, we're going to go ahead and call the meeting over at 6 o'clock. Yeah, we will start with the pledge and then the commissioners' dates of their implication.
Paul, who'd you say?
Kevin.
We didn't meet. Okay.
He's the one that matters.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we come to you tonight thanking you for the many blessings you have given us. We ask, dear Lord, that you be with us as a commission. Let us make decisions that help further our town and our city. We ask that you guide us in our decisions, make them be the right one. Be with us and always say and do, for we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Welcome everyone out on this dreary night. I'm Ray. I told him yesterday, Mother Nature needs to get back on her meds.
I'm going back to Seattle.
This is enough.
Seattle has less rain than Kentucky.
Well, it was. I saw somebody hit on Facebook today, it was either Seattle or Portland, woke up this morning like four hours of snow.
That's unusual.
And it had been in the 70s last week.
Yeah, yeah. It got to 72 on Thursday.
Okay. First item of business is approval of minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion and a second and any further discussion. Those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Post same. Motion passes. Next item is the bills.
Make a motion, we pay the bills.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and any further discussion. Those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Post same. Motion passes. We have nothing under old business and under new business. If it's okay, I would like to bump up and put the 2020 and 2021 audit up first. Dan's here to talk about it. I know he's got a trip ahead of him going home, so.
Tax season.
Sorry?
Tax season.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Maybe you want to stay with us.
Well, this is later in the year. I think I told you when I was here though, we lost two key people during the year. It's just concept of the year. Today, when I was trying to put the finished touches on this, we had a lot of people in and out. This lady, you owe $21 and see if there's anything anybody I had paid.
Did you give her the $21?
Well, I would have. I know it was that we had just taken up a collection and we were paying it. So she went back home and called me again and she's still upset about it. And she said she hated nothing worse than to get right checked by federal government for $21. This lady is retired from Fort Knox at the civil service and her pension is 100% paid by the federal government.
Wow.
I didn't have a whole lot to do.
I wish I could get by with $21.
Well, that's what I thought. You know, I have one not long after that, those $70,000. So I'm here. There's two pages stapled. That we're required to report this to a council or commission stating that you've been audited and what kind of situation you can. The reason for this is it's set a few years ago that these audits, since basically we do all the work right here with Mayor Masev, that in a lot of cases, the commission wouldn't even always know that you've been audited or what the circumstances were on. So it explains a little bit about what the audit is, that there is an estimated per se expense because there's nothing precise about that. No difficulties dealing with management. In fact, you're all really pretty nice people here.
Thank you.
You treat us very well.
We appreciate that.
No correct, no correcting this statement, no disagreements with management. We got managers, gave us the letters, given the certain representations. To our knowledge, we didn't consult with any other independent account on the audit itself, although you do have your group from Litchfield prepares the financial statements. We do have some discussions as we go along and rather than that, so. So actually, audit reports abound in copy. Audit opinions on pages one through three, it's a clean opinion. Page four is a statement in net position. This is, this started in 2004, I believe, that governmental side activities, what you're budgeting on is basically for all practical purposes, money in and money out for the general fund and MRA and the LTEA and cemetery and so forth. This one converts it to the same basis it would be if it was a privately held business. So a lot of it's the same, current assets are pretty much exactly the same. But you pick up down there about a third of the way down, capital assets not being depreciated, which is land construction process, and then capital assets net depreciation. And of course, one big part of that is what you're sitting in right now. That's booked as an actual asset and depreciate just if you're a private business. Current liabilities are pretty much the same as you were budgeted on, but we have to pick up the debt, notes and leases payable, compensated absences. The big thing that's had to be booked for the past several years, you see those deferred outflows, deferred inflows, pension liability. If you go across there, it's just about two thirds of the way down, not that Eli's talking about doing that, but you see that figure, $2.2 million. That's basically what City of Beverden would allow to make City RS solvent. And it's like that all over. It's not that you're any better or worse out than anybody else, it's all allocated, but that's the kind of shape that county board currently has.
And I will throw in there, that's a whole lot better than if we were KRS or KTRS.
Some of those are dark, really dark. And then page five is the same thing, saying about too, this is the business like basis to the governmental like too. You start with expenses, you have $2.6 million and then to the right is how you pay for that. But you see, if not for taxes and those revenues at the bottom, City would cost over $2 million just to cover those expenses. So then you've got enough transfers and revenues at the bottom, the changes in net position down the bottom for the government finances, $231,669. The business type activities, water, sewer and sanitation, there's no difference in display for that because those are considered to be, are supposed to be self-sufficient, so they operate as a business. And water, sewer and sanitation, you know, you're actually charging customers for that and you're supposed to, the revenues are supposed to support the expenses. Page six is a balance sheet.
So can I ask more? So basically, for the end of the year, we were in the black, $463,000.
Under this presentation, you were in the black. Changes in net position, $463,472 under that presentation. And then on page six is a balance sheet on the government funds.
Yeah.
This is traditional, this is a traditional presentation, this is the one that you, that you want to do your votes about. First general fund and then on the as well as we listen back. The total fund balance here is $2.8 million overall at the bottom. You see the difference in how you get from that to that business like basis because you start $2.8 and get up to a little 5 billion.
Right.
And you do that by booking all the fixed assets, but then you go through all the liabilities. Page seven is income statement under that, under the traditional. So, and probably the net change in fund balance, if you look across that at the bottom, this is the traditional one and you put it all together and it's almost $6,000. And page eight is reconciliation. How you go from the 606 down to the 231, 669, that's a business basis. That and ten, balance sheet, income statement, it breaks down, water, sewer and sanitation. If you look at the changes in net position, bottom of page 10, your service system has actually had a profit of $200,000. I don't see that very often. That's usually the one, everything else is supported. Have some cities where the general fund is keeping money into it to keep the flow.
Well, we've had, the regional wastewater here has put some money back into the cities.
Page 11 is the cash dollar for state funds. And you can see all the way across halfway down, net increase in cash and cash equivalents, that each of those funds had an increase in cash overall of $105,000. And so the cash has gone from just under $1.49 million to almost $2 million. And that is the state office refunds alone, that's not general fund. Lots of pages, lots of notes being on, that's real. I should go over it again. Those ones just explain the pain. Page 23 starts capital assets and that shows on the business like basis, what the governmental assets are. You've got land and then you've got all the buildings, land improvements, office equipment and so forth. Not very much added to, $129,000 overall. Then there's some old things that were traded or just written off, 53,1. So it ended up, ended up to $76,000 basically more in assets and then the rest of it's all kind of depreciation. So when you factor all of that into it, you know, then the capital, the net capital assets have actually declined by, well, $139,000, which is due almost entirely to depreciation. And the rest of it just breaks depreciation down between general government, then the police agency, of course, police and fire, streets, cemetery, partial recreation. Page 24 then is the business type activities, this is water, sewer and sanitation. And again, a whole lot, a whole lot of new putting into it. The capital assets roughly the same at the end of the year as the beginning. The net after all depreciation was claimed on it had dropped, you know, about $45,000. And it breaks depreciation down between water, sewer and sanitation. And there's some pages beginning on page 5 with debt, shows that reductions really pretty much across the bay, no new debt. I'll get to that part about the compensated absences in a minute. Capital lease obligations at the bottom, that's the amphitheater. Then 26 shows bracketing on five-year periods where it takes to pay it all off. If you write it out, overall, on governmental activities, paying the interest, the way it's all set up right now, it costs about $2.46 million to pay it all. 27 starts all these disclosures on pension payments. Years ago, that was about a page and a half, not well over 27. That and the health insurance is up going all the way now over to the middle of page 34. Then some notes on page 35, 23 and 24, I covered 19 of the sections. The one at the bottom is the one that I wanted to tell you about. Crude interest payable has always been carried here as a fund level, the same way that you budget.
Now, where's this?
Crude interest payable.
What page are we?
This is, you know, the interest that would be due.
Now, what page are you?
I'm on bottom page 35.
Okay.
I've always carried it like it's a current liability, which would make it like the traditional presentation, but county principals say that crude interest payable should be on a business like basis and it never been done. So the Litchfield firm made that adjustment this time. Then the other one, compensated absence is the same way, you've been carrying all your crude stuff in vacation as current liability, but our principals say that that's supposed to be booked as a long-term liability and only counted at the government line of the business like basis.
Okay.
We just basically just went in and made that adjustment. It wasn't a lot in the hard years, but the beginning of this fiscal year, $74,000 is worth of take if everybody quit today. Page 36 is a budget. And that's probably similar to what you're seeing before, revenue is $159,000 more than you budgeted, expenses are $11,000 less, throw in transfers and everything, your budget was really, general fund budget was $268,000 better at the end of the year than the amount that you budgeted for. And starting 37, several more pages related to notes and the health insurance, supplementary information, beginning on page 43. And all that does is break down the snuff, cemetery, county pride, LTEA and MRA, and all those events are closed. Services on page 45, I've broken down exactly what they are. The four on page 46 is indicating audit of border compliance and internal control. And really, we didn't have any time, as you said, we thought were worthy of being moved into court. So this one, I'd say is, if you ask, cause it's not a clean issue, it's probably as clean as it is.
That's what we like to hear. That's definitely what we like to hear. Any questions? Dana, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Do we need to approve this file? Do we need to approve?
I'm going to accept the audit.
Accept it.
I'm going to accept the audit for 2021.
Kelly, have a motion and a second and any further discussion.
I think I do anything that's any luck either.
Those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Post same. Motion passes. Okay, now we'll go back to number one, which is a 2122 budget amendment.
Yes, it's a, extra volume going ahead and added on here, just for the simple fact of having to budget in 22, 23 budget. So as you go through here, you can see property taxes will be collected a little bit more. We do get the payment in lieu of taxes from the housing authority, restaurant tax, of course, going up, alcohol tax.
I want to back up a minute. That payment in lieu of taxes from housing, that was more than one year taxes.
Yes, yes.
I just want everybody to understand that.
Then if you look on the expense side, you see what terms of commission, that is some of their ARP money that they had received and with the restaurant tax bringing more in, that also means that more is going out. So don't be alarmed by the figures. On the police side, you see on the maintenance repair, we had some damage to some cars we had to fix. Fuel's gone up, you'll see the motor fuel on police, sanitation, and I think the fire department. On the water side, on the second page, of course, we had to change all the transponders. So we were left $300,000. So that's included, income on the water. And on the expense, you can see that there's the back of the motor fuel, the construction and maintenance equipment, that's where the transponders were bought out of. And also, you know, since we sold them in water, we also haven't bought them in water. So you'll, a lot of this is budgetary purposes for 22, 23 budget.
Trying to get it cleaned up so we don't have to wait and do it all last week.
I'd make a motion to accept the budget amendment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and any further discussion. Those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Post same. Motion passes. Next item is KLC workers' compensation.
Thank you, Graham.
I think it's a $3,000 match. We have, we have filed for some, some puncture resistant gloves and a new gas behind your hunch, we just need to have a motion.
We just need a motion to approve applying for the grant, but.
I'll make the motion that we filed.
We have a motion and a second and any further discussion. Those in favor signify with aye. Post same. Motion passes. Next item is Arbor Day Resolution. We do this for our Tree City USA designation every year and I didn't write it down. Do you have a copy? Was there a copy in our packet? I didn't look.
I'm not sure.
I didn't see one.
Okay. George and I talked about it, but I don't know if I sent them one.
There was one in the back.
Okay. It will be scheduled for April 22nd. I just need to go ahead and get an approval for this resolution.
I'm going to approve the Arbor Day Resolution.
We have a motion and a second and any further discussion. Those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Post same. Motion passes. All right, number four personnel, is that when we need to go in close session or something?
Yes.
Okay. Then we'll skip on down to sewer project. I know we've talked about this a little bit and of course, there was a presentation made last week. We received $175,000 and some change from, it's not Ohio County's money, it was Arpa money that came to the state and through Senate Bill 36 last year, they divvied it up to the counties based on population. And there was a committee that met to divvy up each county's portion of it. And Beverden was awarded $175,000 of that money. And we're talking about using that. You remember, we talked last year about the possibility of extension of sewer service out to the Knight subdivision and this was about half that amount. And of course, we have our Arpa funds for the other half. What I need right now is a motion to approve, to advertise for an engineering firm to start design work.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and any further discussion. Those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Post same.
How far down 231 coming toward Beverden is it going to come, or is it just going to come straight to the main road and that's it?
Do what now?
How far is it going to come down like Perry, Washington and turn and go toward Beverden? Will it do that or is it just coming straight out and stopping?
Well, we're not 100% sure yet. What we have in mind is coming down to 231, down towards, right there, the low spot at Cates Hill Loop and putting the lift station there. That way it'll open up about 700, 800 acres of future development for, with sewer. So, you know, we've always said.
I was more curious where it was going to go.
We've always said on our Arpa funds, we want to spend it to where in five and 10 years from now, we'd still see the results of it. To me, that, well, we all kind of agreed it was a good place to start, so. Okay. Ray, welcome. David? Mike?
Couple little things. First, on our policy, and I didn't give a chance for it all, but I'll give y'all if you want to see it. It's identified 7.5 and talking about compensation for travel time. This was when in effect 2003, we've had $30 a day for expense since 2003.
Time change yet.
I'd just like to ask the council or commission that it be raised $10 a day to $40. And we don't know, but maybe half a dozen times a year, what would you say?
I would say that's a.
Is that enough?
That's my question.
I was going to say 45 maybe.
I was going to say 45.
Whatever y'all go for. I mean, you know, I just asked for.
That doesn't sound like near enough money.
Well, personally, I think we can do it for $40 and do all right. I mean, that's all I'm asking for.
I feel you have a little more than.
Whatever y'all want to give.
You'd do better though with around 50.
It's up to y'all now. I'm just asking for 40. And like I said, it's probably not, that won't be used half a dozen times a year.
But you look 17, 14 years ago, we did that.
Yeah.
That's inflation, we haven't kept up with it.
19 years ago. 19 years ago.
2003.
2003.
Oh, yeah, long enough then.
Yeah.
Elementary math.
So anyway.
It's only kind of deep.
It's up, I guess, to Charles.
I would say, I'd like to move it up to $50 a day.
Put that in form of a motion?
I will make that a motion.
I would say consider it on both policies, on police and.
Wherever it applies.
I don't want our sale.
I don't know what that is.
I would assume it applies to all.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not trying to touch Adrian, man. I don't know what they're saying.
It's going to cost to all of them, so I think we ought to apply to all of them before we go in.
Well, it's not like it's thousands and thousands of dollars, but it's something, we need to cover our people.
For probably half a dozen times a year.
What is our mileage now? 43 might be.
How much?
I don't know.
State, the state's 47 right now, I think.
Is it 49?
The state is 41?
If we use our vehicle, 31 cents.
I thought, I thought Ted said over 50 cents a mile.
Well, at the school, it said the state is about 47.
If citizens employ private automobiles, reimburse them at 31 cents a mile.
Yeah, I'm changing.
But it says however, employer encourage you to city vehicles.
If they have to, mileage, I would say we ought to read that we reimburse at the state's current reimbursement rate, the state's.
Okay.
Whatever that is. It's easy to find.
Well, let's back up a minute. We had a motion and a second on the $50.
Yeah.
Let's do that first, keep them separate since it's two separate items in them. So we've got a motion and a second and any further discussion.
We are going to do it across the board for all cities.
That's the way.
For all policies.
Yeah. Fire in.
Okay. Those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Post same. Motion passes. Now, let's do the other one.
Okay, the state current, we might come back and visit again. Say state, the current state reimbursement rate, because I don't know, how about the school does it? Whatever the state reimbursement is, that's what they do. And we ought to stay current with whatever the state's doing and not let it be so far back.
Yeah, because the state changes. They will come bring it down some depending on.
Prices.
Right, yeah. Which I know they have now, they'll probably be going back.
But we set it at a price because it costs like this again in a few years.
Because we try to always provide the vehicle.
Right.
Current state contact, state contact reimbursement rate effective December 1st, 2021 was 44 cents per month.
I think it had gone down, I think it was 47 and went down.
Anyway, can, can we make, can we do it in a motion to where that our rate stays with whatever the current state for that year?
That's what his motion was.
That's what he said. That sounds feasible.
I thought I had an email, but I.
Did I get a second on that?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second.
We got one.
Any further discussion?
We got one, but I got it too.
Yeah, yeah.
Those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Post same. Motion passes.
I want to, I want to, like, ask permission. Permission, we, and Larry and I talked about it, record service. Record service, we, we had a city vehicle that broke down, we had to have towed, it broke down at the county line. Normally, we just tow next on the list, we tow next on the list and they towed, picked the vehicle up to county line, took Paul home and towed miles, who prit was 60 miles. We got a pretty excessive bill. So it was like $325. So I told my officers from this point on, request one service. I told them who to request because we have the right to request whoever we want as a city. But what we'd like to look at, and again, Larry and I talked about it a little bit in time, is getting one record service to do all the city business, like garbage truck, whatever needs to be towed. And any vehicles that we arrest somebody on DUI, any arrestable offense that we arrest somebody, then we would be, use them for our record service, they come to get that vehicle. Now, for the accident, people have the right to request whoever they want, but they would, whoever the record service was, if we deemed to do that, again, they would get all of our, anything that we had towed, they would get and they would do all of our towing, every bit. I've had a little, little interest in it. I don't think there'd be several interested, but I think we need to give everybody an opportunity because if we don't, you know, we decide to do something, don't give everybody an opportunity to say, okay, we'll do this, this and this. And I'd just like to, I know we have to come back, probably go in close session when we do anything, but just permission to maybe advertise to get, see if anybody's interested in. I think it would.
We have a pack ready because everybody's got a question, so.
Well, I have got a pack ready, but I do have something to go by to say, this is what we want, this, so they could, okay, how much are you going to charge the city to tow within the city? AB might have a better idea about what I need to do, maybe I need to get with him on something. But I'd just like permission to check into that and see what we can do. Larry and I talked about it, we think it'd be a good idea, so.
Well, we'd let, until we advertise for bibs and tell them to get the bids in, I believe it's a Mike discretion to call a record if needed, then we get the bid, then we can award the contract.
Well, it's already your discretion now to call who you want.
Yeah, we can call who we want now because, you know, it's our right in the city to call who we want.
Yeah, he's got, I think, yeah.
Yeah, because I told all my officers to call them, well, I told them to call very again.
Main thing you're asking is for us to allow you to.
Take bids.
See about getting some kind of agreement together, you know, something that if I say,
okay, record service, record service, record service, we're going to have a meeting here. a meeting here, I've got this list kind of go by, y'all take it back with you, fill it out, tell us what you'll do, city or what you, you know, we'll tell them what we've backed and put it in there. And so that-
I feel like probably until we do bids, probably should go with the next on the list, that's just-
Do what now?
I said, I feel like probably until you do bids, probably should go with next on the list, if that's how it's been done.
Well, it's been, it's been next on the list.
But that's, that's the county.
No, that's for county, that's for the whole county.
And that's for outside vehicles. If we, if we go by, we've gone by next on the list for our own.
Yeah, for our own.
Also.
Yeah, when we've had one towed so far, we just went on, on our own, you know, next on the list, but after this other little last go a week ago, I told my, because I don't want a vehicle charged to tow our vehicle in the county, at least in the county. And it'd be a minimal charge out of county, but, because he's been really good to all of us, you know, towed vehicles for us. So that's just kind of what I'd like to try to get something together and come back, make it present to y'all next, next month.
Want to make a motion? Advertise for bids. Now, we don't want to do that yet.
Yeah, to give you permission to-
To get the information together.
Yeah, just permission to get packed together.
Yeah, sure.
Permission to proceed with the process.
Yeah, right. Proceed with the process.
I think that'd be a good idea, really and truly.
All right. And we'll, I'll try to, no, get with AV, we'll try to come up with something, you know, and get a lot more things like you.
We would hope.
We, we talked about it the other day for 15, 20 minutes, we're kind of on the same, same page.
Tommy, you have anything? Lisa? Really?
Can't believe that. Hey, it was a real nice meeting the other day when we went, of course, anytime you get $175,000, it's, it's really nice, but it was a really nice meeting and the only thing I hate is they said I make Channel 14 news and I didn't even see it.
Did they interview you?
No, didn't interview, they got a picture of us getting our check.
You can go back and look at it, they're, they're in storage.
I got to figure out how to do it because I like to see.
It's like you were Santa Claus. Santa.
Hey, I tell you what, our lieutenant governor is really a nice lady, I want to tell you, she is really a nice lady.
She seems like she is.
She seemed down to earth.
Yes, she did. She, when she came off of that platform to give the folks from Centertown their check, it showed a lot of class, a lot of class. That's all I got to say.
Sandy?
I don't think I have anything.
Charles?
I'm good.
Kenny?
Everything's going good, I'm not going to complain right now. Everything. I do have one thing that I would-
There you go.
I have to bring this up, but I'm bringing this up for Larry's sake, not anybody else. We have a little problem down at the Oldham Park, we need a, if somebody's using Oldham Park and you, you know-
We got a big problem down there.
We need, we need, if somebody's using Oldham Park, you need to, the police need to make sure they have documented with us, they are not allowed to just go down there and put on a show and bring out speakers and have food trucks and all that unless they registered with the city. If they do that and they're not registered with the city, that's, that's not right. Because we've had a couple of instances where some people were charged, apparently, and I hate to say this, they tell me that, I've never-
They charged admission?
They were charged money to set up.
To use a field.
I have not found any definite, but I was told that by two different people.
I think the commission need to go with the source and say, enough, you know.
You're probably talking about the day it was real cold when they were down there, somebody was down there.
This was actually started last summer. I've been hearing all kinds of stuff going on down there and it, this, this got to you back in the winter time and I just, I wanted to bring it up because this past weekend, I got chewed out for something and I come to find out, it wasn't true. So, you know, I don't mind getting chewed out, I do stupid stuff all the time, but when I get chewed out for something that we didn't do, the city didn't do, then I get upset.
I don't know who you're talking about, they'll contact me and try to get me involved in stuff and I just don't do it.
And I'm good, I don't mind doing stuff, it's just, it's just a matter of, of, don't lie to me about it. You know, if they did it, that's fine, but if I come, if I ask Larry, hey, did you guys do this, and he tells me no?
So I, maybe a question on that, is there some sort of permit process that we can do to where if something's going on down there on a Saturday?
They're supposed-
My officer can roll in there and say, hey, I need to see you, whatever.
Well, see, they're supposed to register down here at the city bill.
But there's no permit or anything for them to have on site.
There's nothing that they would have on hand.
No, there's not.
So if we don't know, if they just say, well, we've got a permit, then we come back on Monday and, you know, they didn't have to mention it.
Should we start doing problems?
Aren't they supposed to get a temporary business license? Didn't we make?
If it's a food truck, they should have a business license.
But I think they probably do, don't they, the one that was there?
They had two or three different ones there.
See, I don't know if full service needs has had what you're talking about, but-
Well, the thing is, there, there are people that go down there to use the facility and I get it, it's a facility that does need to be used, but you can't have one person running somebody else off just because they don't like somebody.
Right.
And you can't say, well, it's my field because I scheduled it, no one scheduled it. It's not on a schedule in here. And, you know, it's going to cause a problem unless we get everybody to come down here and register.
And I thought there was an understanding that-
They are supposed to register every time they have something.
Well, and that's what, that's what every time that I've been questioned, that I've told them, I said, have you talked to Kevin or me? Because that's out of my league anyway.
And there, there is a sheet that they can sign saying, if I'm not mistaken, right, that they can say, we're, we're using Oldham Park for da, 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 da. It's not that hard to come down here to do it, I mean, and if you're going to use it, you should be doing that.
Where would that sheet be located?
On the car.
Yeah, you're talking about if something happens on a Saturday or Sunday.
Down there for that weekend, just one person, but we do have conflict where there's two separate-
You've got somebody, yeah, you'd have somebody in it.
Need some sort of proof.
Something that you can get to at that time.
Well, you might be thinking-
Supposedly there's something going on this weekend and I'm like, well, no one told me about it.
Well, if you're giving them to come in, they fill out that form, you give a copy, they could show it, I've been to the city hall.
That's all that's-
Who's supervising? It's my fault if it was-
Well, yes. Well, that's the thing, this person that's-
Basically wants to know if it's a city building, I mean, we're talking about-
The Oldham Park, huh?
Yeah, it, remember, cities, what, what he brings up is a good point because if, if you've got established activities down there that somebody through the city commission is responsible for overseeing, make sure the premises is safe, all those type things, then there's not a problem. But it's, it's, it is city property if it's being done in that way. It's also city property if it has no supervision at all. And because, because of that, you almost got to have something in place in which it's being monitored. If, if y'all are going to keep the property, if the city's going to continue to keep the property for park or whatever, because if somebody gets hurt down there at night or, yeah, yeah, the city's, no difference happens here.
Well, and it, to my knowledge, it always had been up until apparently just recently.
Yeah.
Now, what's happening that I know of this weekend was an Easter egg hunt out of my church at 11:00. Recently, they had told me that they were going to do something and I said, no, we'd have spied off and do something different then. And then we found out we weren't going to be involved and-
Somebody else jumped in.
Then they bailed on, and they bailed on the vein wagon and I don't know about it, but it, it was supposed to be that group. At our church, we do a community thing down there for projects, usually do it every year. We had been in the big park and I know when we did it in the big park that I went by and got registered, but if it's an extra this year, that's my fault, Kevin.
No, I'm not, this thing this week, it wasn't what bugged you, it's what happened about a month ago.
Was your Easter egg hunt last Saturday or this coming Saturday?
Coming this Saturday.
This coming Saturday.
Okay, now this was an event that's just-
And if you're there, I don't have a problem.
I didn't know about that and-
Yeah, this is a problem happened a couple, eight weeks ago, six weeks?
I know I've passed by there and there'd be food trucks down there, or I'd see a sign, there's a food truck at some kind of a scene or something and I, I didn't-
And I, yeah, we, I'm generally just under assumption that, that, that clearly there's somebody here in the city.
Well, Lisa has a calendar for ours and whatnot, and what we can do is anytime there's a function going on, we just make a copy.
They need to let us know.
We can make a copy here for Mike and make sure the officers get it.
If you guys copy that calendar.
But any, anything that is scheduled over there, whether Jim schedules it or Sandy schedules it, it needs to come through here.
Yeah, that's been-
I'm sorry because we, we always had come down and scheduled anything we were doing.
But I knew about you, you did it last year, didn't you?
You did it last Saturday.
Yeah.
We even did one in the big park over there, had over 1,000 people show up, had, had 800 hunting eggs. And we fed everybody. Didn't charge nothing, we just fed and-
But remember that whiteboard we used to have that hung in the old commission room?
There's one around the corner there.
Is it hung up?
One time we had the biggest Easter egg hunt in this county because the one, we did it at night.
I know, but I was just, what if we got something like that?
That'd be fun.
To hang up, even if it was back there somewhere by where the old candy machine used to be.
That might be easier.
It's kind of out of view, you know, from the people walking in and out, but something they have easy access to.
Well, if it's in there, we don't have access.
Oh, yeah, that-
Because the door's locked. I mean, I could probably get in the door on the other side, but I'm not here on Saturday.
Yeah.
Well, it's just, just being a matter of running off a copy sometime.
They can put it in their car.
Yeah, because it's not a weekend store.
And usually it's just, we don't know if there's anything there.
Larry, is there a time at night that you got posted that people have to stop functions down there? At the Oldham? Is it, is it mark though, we have signs that say?
Oh, we have it written in the policy, that's what they were, we have it written in the policy.
That I don't know.
See, we need to do that. Say curfew 10 o'clock, say, no using facilities unless you've registered with city, stuff like that. Because I think it might stop a lot of the things that have been going on, might, I'm not saying it will.
But you can enforce it if it's posted and the commission has put something in place, your police can, can-
Can enforce it.
Can enforce it, yeah.
Well, I do know for a fact that there was an instance where we had a group down there doing something and another group came in and ran them off, said, we got this reserved and all, and then they didn't.
What was this?
This was back in the fall, it was the football.
That's more what I was talking about, if it becomes conflict.
Who had it? Who was down there?
Junior football was using it for practice and they come down and said, they had registered.
Who came down?
And I said, I said, no, it's not registered because she doesn't fill out the application that says that she's supposed to be down there. That's the big rub, we have to have something where, like you say, if two people are going to go for it at the same time, somebody should be on the list that Tommy can come down there and go, nope, this group's got it, you have to go home.
I know a lot of times in the, in the summertime or fall, I go, we do one Wednesday night a month down there and have, I actually take my tractor and do a hayride for the kids.
Yeah, and stuff like that.
We usually tell you guys that we're going to do it, so that's a-
You're, you're registering for us, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't want to get, I don't want to overstep my bounds either, but I know right now there's a conflict going down there because I, I get enough wind of it. But I do stay.
So can we make a-
Pick some signage up, like, I know there used to be some down there.
And can we make it a policy, we have to amend the policy, say that you have to register to use the facility now?
That should already be in policy.
I think we just need to tell the party that we're having issues with.
They have to register.
Just, you know, from this point forward, everything comes through the city.